All right, we will now call the city council regular meeting to order for October 28th at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be given by Pastor Candy Garcia.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read a word from Psalms, chapter seven, verse eight. "The Lord shall judge the people. Judge me, O Lord, according to my righteousness and according to my integrity within me." Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, giving you the glory and the honor and all the praises. And we ask you today, Lord, to give this council the wisdom and the knowledge that they need, Lord, to go forth for this town, Lord. Bless this town, anoint it, Lord, with your Holy Spirit, and let them be touched by you. Everyone in this town, Lord, let them receive, Lord, let them be touched, Lord, and we ask for your blessing upon this council today in this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray, and we give you the glory and the honor, and his people say, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Here.
Councilmember Sutherland? Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, we have the approval of September 30th and October 3rd. Special council meetings?
Together.
Together.
I move to approve September 30th special council members' meeting minutes and October the 3rd special council members' minutes meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or corrections? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. All right, we have a extra item that you were all handed out that we'd like to go ahead and add if we can. Now, we do have a representative from Classic Palladiums that is here to speak on this. If we have any questions, this is the landlord's consent and waiver of lien. So we're gonna go ahead and add it into citizens and outside agencies. We're gonna call it item 5A. Do we have any questions on the consent and waiver? Jerry has a lot of facts about it. If we have any questions for him?
Can you, can you kinda like go over what, because this was just handed out to us?
Right, sorry about that. This really just came up the other day, and we resolved it actually this morning. But it's something that came up back in May. They wanted to get some financing, and they got a waiver provision that we needed to sign as their landlord. And, but the agreement was a little vague as to, you know, a little confusing with regard to whether certain aspects of it that they were asking for were, you know, they could ask for, and we would have to do. So I wrote you a memo about that. But I talked it over with our commercial property lease person at Saxon Gilmore, Bernice Saxon, and she felt as though we were better off just to go ahead and accept it the way it is and go ahead and sign. And so that's why I made the recommendation to do so.
So it won't hold us binding to anything by?
Well, it's nothing that we're not already bound by.
Yeah.
So if anybody has it, the motion's there in capitals, capital letters, I gave you.
Have any other questions on it? Anyone in the audience? I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion that has been set forth for us. If anyone would like to read that?
I will. I move to approve the landlord's consent and waiver of lien for Classic Claims Financing Company on item 5A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Further questions on it?
Yeah, one question. Jerry? You said that this, it's nothing here to keep us, that's binding the city of Avon Park, nothing that already that will bind you. So could you give an example of one of the things that?
Yeah, with regard to the property that's, that they have inside of their place, equipment and so on?
Oh, okay.
You know, the mortgage companies generally like to have that as security.
Yeah, yeah.
So do landlords. But in this instance, in our contract, you know, we've waived the right to have that as our, to secure us. Later on, it talks about, you know, default and things like that. But, but I, you know, we're just gonna ignore what those things say because it's probably just an error in drafting and, you know, or, you know, where we raised an error.
I got you.
So that's, that's really the crux here.
Okay. I just had to bring it back to my remembrance. I remember that was said at our meeting prior to, back in May, that we was already binding or giving up stuff that we should not have, but anyway.
Yes, sir. Name and address again? You know the drill by now.
Theodore A. Murray, 1681 McLoughlin Road, Frostproof, Florida. I'm a real estate agent as well as a landlord.
Yes, sir.
You cannot go ahead and hold anyone's possessions over $500. You've gotta itemize everything. You've gotta tell them exactly what you're doing with it, and you've gotta give it back to them. You cannot keep that as hostage.
We are, we found that out later.
So that's the only thing. I found it out as well. So we're all learning together. Isn't that fun?
Yep.
So there we go.
Gotcha.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Item number five, we have an event. The Calvario City Church VBS Summer Camp Outreach for June 8th through 12th, 2020 is requesting the use of the community center. Their request is set forward in the application in front of you. There's a little bit of information about the event there. Does anyone have any questions on this?
So they asking for this for, do we rent that out? We rent that out normally, don't we?
We normally do. This is a 501(c)(3), I believe.
Yeah, and then we did it for the?
We've, we've given access to that for several organizations in the past.
For the summer?
Right.
Barbecue cookout that the museum people do or whatever they?
Yeah, as well as the candidate forum that happens from time to time during the elections.
That's a city project. We charge ourselves.
But it's not, though. It's actually, you know, it's actually, not a lot of times it's actually been put on by other organizations, so.
You have a representative here available if you'd like to ask any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions of them?
No.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the rental of the community center for Calvary City Church for the event on June 8th?
8th through 12th?
12th of 2020, as specified in C5 of our agenda.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
So anyone have any other questions on it? Yes, sir. Name and address, if you will.
Tom Macklin, 609 East Main Street here in Avon Park. I wanna make sure I understood the motion and what the intent of the agenda item is. Do they want to rent it or use it?
Use it. It'd be a donation of the city to the organization.
Was the motion not the rental?
No.
No.
Not rental.
Okay, 'cause I'm sure that she said rental.
Oh, but if I did, then I didn't mean to say rental.
'Cause that's what, the only reason I got up, because I didn't think that was the intent of the agenda item.
No.
But I'm surely, pretty sure that if, when you listen back, you'll hear rental. So it's the use of?
The use of the, the community center for their event.
As set forward in the application. That's before us.
Yes. Okay.
All right, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under staff updates administration, we have the Alvin Henson code enforcement fine reduction. Item number D6. Staff want to update us on that?
Yes, Mr. Henson came in and spoke with me probably about three weeks ago, and he had a building permit in hand, but he wasn't really concerned about that. His concern is, is that he's had a running fine on his property since 2018, November of 2018. And it, his property came into compliance on October 3rd, 2019. The fine was running at $100 a day, and the total of the fine is $32,700. He's, his property is now in compliance. I've spoken with code enforcement, and he is here tonight to ask for a reduction in the fine.
Okay.
And I don't know what kind of a reduction. He hasn't let me know, so he's here if you wanna talk to him.
Okay.
Mr. Henson?
Would you come up to the microphone, please? Is this Alvin?
Yes.
This is Alvin Henson?
Yeah.
Please give your address, please.
General purpose of Cal.
Thank you, sir.
And when I did start moving the stuff and all the trailers and everything y'all had told me to move, I got it out the way. And then this permit by the fence, I didn't have no permit. When I put it up, though, I had, I had people complaining. I called it in.
Mr. Henson, can you pull that microphone towards you a little bit there?
I say the people are, been calling in complaining about the fence, you know. And then I went and got a permit and everything. I got, got the permit. Now, I wanna see how much time y'all give me to get the fence in proper to how y'all want it.
Okay. All right, so if I understand correctly, the property, the actual, what the liens were put on the property for was for property violations that have now been brought into compliance already.
Correct.
So the fence that he's referring to is a separate issue?
The fence has been removed. He had some scrap metal and stuff in his yard, scrap items, and those have been removed as well. Everything is in compliance now.
Okay, got it.
So the question is about the $32,700?
Right.
And what do we do to that in the past? Do you remember?
Well, I, I just wanted to comment, as I always do when these come up, that you undermine your code enforcement officers, and you undermine the code enforcement special magistrate. And it's really kinda hard for you to come in and complain about code enforcement when you adjust these types of things and don't enforce them. That's my, as I mention it every time somebody comes in asking for this.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I do believe that Mr. Henson is on a fixed income and paying $32,700 in fine is not gonna be possible for him. I already know that.
Yeah, in the past, in similar situations, I mean, the whole goal as far as, is to get it into compliance. And in the past, we've, we've forced the payment of the hard costs. We don't know what those hard costs are, do we?
Can we find out what the hard costs are?
Yes, we can do that. I'm sure that they'll be able to, code enforcement will be able to give that to me.
Okay.
But now I don't have them.
Okay.
Okay, so we also, now, this fine is still running, right?
No, it stopped on, on October 3rd.
Okay. So at this point in time, would it, would it be consequential for him, for us to just wait until our next meeting? So whenever we have the full hard cost?
Yes, nothing, nothing's going to happen at this point. I mean, the only thing that, that would happen if he wanted to sell his property, he's got the judgment against it, but in the meantime, between now and the next meeting, I don't think you wanna sell your property, do you, Mr. Henson?
That's November the 13th?
November the 13th.
At 6:00 PM.
You understand what he's saying, Mr. Henson?
Yeah.
We're not gonna do anything tonight. We just identified it. You come back on November the 13th.
Okay.
And then what they're proposing, what they're thinking about doing is that charge would be done in the past is charge only the hard costs for what the city had to pay out. Okay?
We have fees for filing. We have fees for different things like that that we have to pay. So in the past, we've reimbursed those hard costs that the city had to pay. And as far as the, you know, quote unquote, interest or the fines that we're not having to pay anything for, we've removed those in the past. So that's what's gonna be proposed, and we'll discuss that at our November 13th meeting.
Is nothing done when we still going on?
No, no, sir.
No, that, that $100 is not going on anymore. You're, you're done with that.
Okay.
So come back on November 13th at 6:00, okay? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Name and address again?
It's gonna be an ongoing thing, but Theodore A. Murray, 1681 McLoughlin Road. I had the same issue that came up down in Sebring because I had mildew on my drip edge. At a certain point, we as a society have to understand that the letter of the law is one thing, but the spirit of the law is the other. So if we're forcing the people in our own districts to give up their houses because they can't afford the fines that we put on them as the society, for them to live in the society, and they're paying that in, where's the justice there? They vote for us to be their representatives, not to take their property. So when you go ahead and you propose $33,000 for somebody with a fence, Mr. Burr, I understand the spirit of the law as well as the letter of the law. But when you can't afford it and you force a person out and they've gotta give up their property, where do they go? Don't they then become a burden on society and we have to pay for them? Because where do they go? I mean, where does he go once he loses his house? Because he can't afford to pay $33,000. That's just a made up number anyway.
All right.
These are questions that I would truly like answers for, because I had fixed mine down in Sebring. I put new siding up. I did everything else, but I'm a person of means. There's a lot of people that aren't. I think we're forgetting that. And if we're gonna be a just society, let's be a just society.
Well, I'm not for, I'm not for imposing $32,000 on him.
I was speaking to Mr. Burr, because he said that point blank, there's no sense going ahead and enforcing it if you're not really going to enforce it. That's what I gathered.
You're not enforcing it. I mean, you're not enforcing anything at this point. So, I mean, at some point, at some point, you come in and you say, well, you know, the streets look really bad, and these houses are not getting fixed up. But then, you know, the code enforcement goes out and does something about it, then don't be, people just ignore it, because this was basically ignored for a year. It wasn't, wasn't as if we said, okay, $32,000 for you. No, it was $100 a day, kinda getting fixed in very, before that. First, they get a warning.
You don't know the situation.
You don't seem to understand the law, see? Let me explain to you.
I do.
The fact of the matter is, they get a warning. It's an adequate amount of time warning to fix it. Then they get another warning by the code enforcement officer saying, you need to fix it by this date, otherwise you're gonna face $100 a day. It wasn't done then either. Then the $100 a day starts and went for a year before anything was fixed. So I'm not, I don't disagree with the decision they're making, but don't tell me that I'm, I don't understand the law, that I'm being unfair to somebody.
No, I'm saying you don't understand the situation.
I'm simply saying that there's, it's, if it's unfair, somebody brings themselves into that unfair circumstance by ignoring the law, okay? That's my point, dude.
Okay. Well, the only thing that I'm doing as a representative, because I do wanna represent this community, is the spirit of the law, not the letter of the law. Because the letter of the law, as we have seen time and time again, just puts more onus on the public to finance that. So let's go ahead and get back to caring about one another. Like you said, he came into compliance. That was your goal. Let's set goals for what we wanna achieve. It's not to go ahead and bolster so that we can spend $400,000 on a parking lot.
Yep.
So that's how I feel.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Anything else on item number six? Seeing none, item number seven. We have change order number two. This is for North Central Avenue. Danielle?
Um, there was a change order done for additional improvements to the curbing on Pleasant? Pleasant and North Central? Um, and the amount of $8,689. The work has already been completed. I need a formal approval of the change order. It does not affect the grant as far as extra expenses. We're still within the grant limit that we were grant, that we were approved for. Um, we just need a formal approval of the change order.
Okay.
The only question I have on this is for Jerry. The Cool and Cobb is the CEI on this project, and obviously that is a relative of mine, so can I vote on this issue or not?
Do they receive an income out of this?
They receive income based on the?
You should not.
The engineering portion.
Okay. I'll need a abstention form. Is there any other questions on item number seven, change order?
Did somebody approve that change order?
Um, it was previously approved by the former city manager because he felt it was within his purchasing authority.
Okay.
Um, but with it being a state grant, we need formal approval on all change orders for grants.
Okay.
So this is already, this is gonna be covered with the grant itself, so it doesn't cost the city anything?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions on the North Central Avenue?
Nope.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve item number D7, change order number two, Cool and Cobb, North Central Avenue, an amount of $8,689.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions? Seeing none, we will call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
I'll abstain, as I'm related to one of the subcontractors on this project.
Okay, motion passes with a vote of three in favor and one abstain.
All right, we have item number eight. Job descriptions for finance analyst and director of finance. Kim?
Yeah, those, we just wanted to share those with you. You had asked for them at the last meeting to be redone. And I believe that there's still a couple of typos or a couple of things that need to be changed in them, like the analyst would not report to the city manager. The analyst would report to the finance director, those types of things. But if you have looked them over and you're okay with everything, except for those minor things, we would like to put those out for advertisement as soon as you're ready for us to, so that when the new city manager comes on, we'll be moving forward.
I just have one question.
Go ahead.
Financial analysts on the second page, down to requirement parts, it says that eight years experience in government accounts, is that normal? Eight years, eight to 10 years?
I'm not really sure, because I have never worked with a financial analyst, in all honesty.
That's only under the classification if you have an associate's degree.
Okay, so?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. But I was, I was thinking, I was thinking that it was more 10 to 12 years with an associate's degree. That's my thought. I didn't know where the eight came from.
And, and it's entirely up to council. I mean, we can make it whatever you think is the best for it to be. So, you know, more is?
I don't have a problem with the, with the eight years. I mean?
I have a point here. We're speaking about the analyst right now?
Yes.
Why don't we wait until we get a financial director? Because there might be a lot of changes that he'd like to make on that analyst. And let's get a director first and then go with the analyst and separate the two. I mean, don't it make a lot of sense to you about to do that?
Makes sense to me, too.
Yeah, I agree with you.
One thing that, that appears on both is the valid Florida driver's license. Are we really going to limit it to Florida residents only?
Well, if they come, if they're hired, they're gonna have, if they move here, they're gonna have to have a Florida driver's license, because you have to get one within 30 days.
Yep.
Yeah, but that?
Just a valid license to begin with. I think a valid license period would probably, yeah, and they would have to get one within a certain amount of time anyway. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, is there any, anyone opposed to holding off on the analyst?
No, I'm not.
No.
Okay.
That makes sense.
For the director? Any questions, comments, or concerns on the director's job duties?
I would like to note on both of those, the funds that are listed, that the salaries are gonna be coming out of, are, have been corrected. They're actually coming out of finance per the budget you guys approved.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not out of the water fund.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any questions or corrections on those?
No.
Is the council okay with going ahead and advertising this?
For the financial director, I am.
The director, you're gonna have to set the salary range.
Okay.
I thought we already set.
I thought we did that already.
Yeah, I thought we did per our budget.
I think we postponed it until the director's job description was finished.
Well, I?
We did, we did set a figure in our budget.
During budget, yes. They did set a figure. You guys just haven't set the range or anything yet, so.
Do you know what that figure is?
Um, I know that the top figure was 66?
Mm-mm.
Should be higher than that.
I wanna say, yeah, I wanna say it was around between 70 and 80,000.
Okay.
So?
Can you give us a?
I'd rather not guess, so let's, let's get the exact number and bring it up at our next meeting. Anyone oppose to that?
No.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions on the finance director job description? Yes?
I'm giving you a number of 75,000.
Is that the number?
Yeah, it was 54,000 on top of what Ricky was making, which he was around 21,000.
Can we just be patient on that and bring it back to us, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll come back with a suggestion of what the range should be, so.
Okay. Anything else on the finance director?
Nope.
Seeing none. Moving on. Item number nine, we have the step pay plan. Kim, it's your turn.
We're gonna pull that. It's actually probably a union thing, but we have two employees who are on the step pay plan with the rest of the employees, but their steps only go to seven and the rest of them go to 15. But there may be a beginning amount that they started at that was more. I have to get more information on that, so I'm gonna have to talk to payroll and probably the union on that. So we'll get back with that.
I think that was, should've been also part of our discussion with the union on the steps being changed, so I think we need to hold that off, because that was something that was presented to lower that, those step down from 15 to, I think, about eight, somewhere around there, so.
Okay.
That definitely would be a contract thing, a contract negotiation.
Yeah.
Are the two, are the two people under? The two people under asks me not fire?
Yeah, it's not fire. It's the general employee.
Oh, general employee. I'm sorry, thank you.
Ask me or how reset.
Well? Kim, did those two employees leave and then come back?
No, they're both still here.
They've been here all along.
Um, one of them's been here for 13 years, and I don't remember right offhand how long the other one's been here, but?
Okay. Anything else on the step buyback plan, or step plan? Seeing none, we have item number 10, buyback employees, vacation, etc. Danielle?
This is the general form that we've used in the past. Um, we were going to offer the employees the 80 hours of a combination of either vacation or sick.
There, we're looking to do it with the next payroll run, so they would be turned in to us by November fourth if they wish to do the buyback, and then it would be paid out on the check on November eighth.
This is the same thing that we've done in the past?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
But I think that Danielle and I had discussed it, and we were gonna do it once instead of twice this year, because it was so late, you know, so close to Christmas, so give them the buyback option to do one time, instead of two times this year.
Okay.
That's why we went with the eighty hours instead of forty.
So last year you did it forty hours for one and then forty hours for the other one?
We did not, we did not, yeah, we didn't do a buyback last year.
Two years ago.
I mean, last year, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, two years ago, we did forty hours, we usually did it in October and November, and then in December, just before Christmas, we did another buyback of forty.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do a combination of the total of eighty hours this time, instead of doing it two separate. So they'll get one lump.
Okay.
Does anyone oppose to that?
One question I have on here, where it says HR will provide employees, if there is a reason not due to their policy, do we still have an HR person?
Yes.
And that's only based on what our policy currently has, because there are limitations on what you can sell during the buyback.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? You need a motion on this?
Please.
Okay, we'll be looking for a motion.
I move to approve the application for the employees' buyback program.
Eighty hours.
As identified in item number D ten.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, item number eleven, we have communication services tax and agreement and addendum.
You guys have already done this, but it was when Ricky and David were both here, and both of their names are on this agreement.
Oh.
So, all I'm wanting is to see if you'll agree to have their names removed and put myself, Danielle, and Suzie as the representatives for the city for the communication tax services. It's a confidentiality agreement is all it is, so.
Need a motion for that?
Please.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I make a motion to approve item number D eleven, communication services tax and agreement and addendum with Kim, Suzie, and Danielle.
Okay.
Second, I have a question.
Go ahead.
The last time we did it was including the city manager and the.
Finance director.
So when the new city manager and the financial director, they come back again to us again, okay, yeah, that's fine.
Yes.
Exactly. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous, sorry.
Item number twelve, we have the approval of the holiday calendar for 2020, this is the one that Highlands County Holiday Calendar is using. Do we have any changes or opposition to the schedule set, set forth?
No, I'm fine with it.
It's the same one that the county is using, the same one we used last time, I don't have a problem with it.
We'll need a motion.
Make a motion, excuse me, approve item number D twelve, two thousand twenty holiday calendar per Highlands County Holiday Calendar, same as their days off.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, we have any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, we have Aetna Insurance Renewal.
Okay, we didn't realize that if we wanted to look into other companies, we would need to go to bid, so we had two companies, but we have removed one. We're going to recommend that we stay with Aetna, and in your package, you have the rate sheets, which are approximately five to six and a half percent increase, which is better than the fifteen percent they originally proposed. They will also be including an EAP program, an employee assistance program for employees that may need some help at some time. And also, I gave to you at the beginning, before the beginning of the meeting, a sheet with purple on it, and I just got this five minutes before I walked into the meeting, but these are two PPO plans, because the plans that Aetna is offering are HNO, not MO, but NO, and some doctors do not take HMO or NOs, so they did give us a proposal for some PPO rates, and I don't know if it's anything that anybody will want, but I just wanted you to know that it is available. So, we recommend that we stick with Aetna this year, because the rate increase was minimal, plus they're giving us, you know, some extra benefits, so.
Okay.
So the two companies that you originally received quotes from, how many more companies were there to choose from?
There were, there were several other that we could, that we could have won, if we'd have went out to bid, we probably would have received several participants or potential participants.
So obviously, we don't have time to do that this year.
Right.
But for next year, we should definitely do that.
Right, and also with Aetna, so I don't forget to let you know, we have to be with that company for a year before they will allow us to do this, is what I'm told. As of next year, we can actually start our enrollment process earlier and do it on a fiscal year instead of a calendar year, so we can actually operate our budget better, and so that, so that would be a good thing if, you know, if we wind up sticking with them next year. So, we'll be able to budget better, and then we are in the process right now of setting up open enrollment dates as soon as possible, because this insurance that we have now, it renews on December first, so we want to get the open enrollment done and over with and be, be ready for it, so.
Total amount of the project is three hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred dollars forty-four cents.
Yes.
You said you looked at another company?
Yes.
Is there any reason why we don't have a chance to look at them and compare?
Because we didn't go out to bid, so we needed to give other companies the same opportunity, or had to stick with what we had.
So when do we have to make this decision?
We need to make this decision tonight, so that we can move forward, otherwise, we're not gonna have health insurance as of December first.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the renewal project for, to be Aetna's insurance company for City of Avon Park.
Let's face, okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second, further questions? Yes, sir.
Theodore A. Murray, sixteen eighty-one, McLoughlin Road, so is ten thousand people is what the population of Avon Park is, correct?
Yep.
And you say that it's three hundred thirty-six thousand dollars, so that's thirty-three dollars and sixty cents per constituent to pay for the healthcare.
Thereabouts.
And they're increasing roughly six percent is what you're saying, from what they did before. Now, the question that I have is, why doesn't the hospital that's locally kind of work with us on that? I know they don't accept my insurance, which is Blue Cross and Blue Shield through the Affordable Healthcare Act, because I have pre-existing conditions, and they have a discriminatory period that's every day except for November first through December fifteenth. So they can discriminate against me, not offer any healthcare insurance or anything, that's an open enrollment. So the question that I have is, will the local hospital even accept Aetna?
No idea.
So, wouldn't that be a bit of a burden if you're buying insurance from some company and the local hospital won't even accept it?
Could be.
You understand what I'm saying? These, these are just questions that I have as, as an individual, because I know now that Aetna went ahead, or not Aetna, but Advent Healthcare bought Lake Wales Hospital, so they bought them, now I can't go there either with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So now I get to travel to Winter Haven or Lakeland.
Are you saying that Florida Hospital will not take Aetna?
I'm saying Florida Hospital will not take Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and nobody here knows whether or not they will accept Aetna.
Right.
Well, it's too late for us to do it now, because we go when December will.
But December first, the question that I have is, isn't that open enrollment? Couldn't you just go ahead and crunch the numbers and figure out, you know what I mean?
I'm gonna say we've had Aetna now for a year, and we've had some employees that went to the hospital and doctor's visits, and I have not heard anything back saying they could, would not accept.
The only employee I know whose doctor does not take Aetna is mine, so.
And you're still willing to vote for it, you are a brave soul, aren't you? So, that's, those are the questions that I have.
For the best, get, take one for the team, you know.
Yeah, because as I'm running for Congress, I'm, I'm voting for universal healthcare, and that would be my shtick in this area, is it will save the community three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. So we've got to look at the pros and the cons of everybody that's involved in these situations.
Next year, we will go out to bid, for sure, so we'll have more participation.
So that's the only thing that I ask, because, you know, when you're sick and you've got to go to a hospital, and it's an emergency, and they've got to take you somewhere, and then you get to that hospital and they don't accept your insurance.
They gotta take you.
And they will charge you, too, because I was sold by Marto Hospital for eight thousand dollars for three and a half hours. So that's, that's the question that I have with these things, you know, as a government entity. I just want to know that the people who are my representatives have my best interest, and they're looking at all aspects for my care, because that's why I'm willing to spend thirty-three dollars and sixty cents for everybody else to have healthcare.
Okay.
Very good.
I have a question for you then, you said you're for universal healthcare?
Yes, sir.
That would, that would save, the safer making these payments?
Three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
So who's gonna pay for the universal healthcare?
We still would out of our pockets to go ahead and cover it, and it would be a two percent increase on taxes, I, I respected your question.
We're gonna.
I'm gonna be courteous, no, can I answer this question?
Quickly.
No, I'm gonna let them know what, where it's gonna come from.
Quickly.
Okay. The proposed agenda by Bernie Sanders is anybody making over fifty million dollars a year would pay an increase of two percent, and that would generate roughly fourteen trillion dollars over the next ten years. So I don't think that anybody in this room makes over fifty million dollars, do they? If they do, don't vote for me, because I'm definitely gonna put a tax on you.
Got it. All right.
Okay.
We're talking about Aetna Insurance Renewal, not universal healthcare.
No, no, no.
All right. We have a motion in a second, any other questions on the renewal? We're gonna have to keep talking down, out of the audience there. Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you, item number fourteen, insurance letter on the Brickell Building, sent out ten twenty-one nineteen.
That's the city attorney.
City attorney, do you have any comments for us?
Nope, no extra comments, we received a check in the mail this morning.
Yes.
And with everything less than deductible, so it had the desired effect.
Very good.
So the letter was sent out, and we got a check in the amount, we got a check in the mail today.
Ninety-seven thousand. He said that he had, Suzie had been working with him before they went, before she went on vacation, and he had already been moving.
Right.
In that direction, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so the letter, when he got the letter, he said he was kind of surprised to get the letter, because they were already in motion of paying it, so.
We had delayed him by having all these changes in our government.
So what other money have we received from them on the Brickell Building, is that the only payment that we've received?
Right now, unless you have the one, no, this is the only.
Do we have any other funds coming for the mold remediation or any of that?
That was included in the one hundred and seventeen thousand, the list that we originally presented to you, I think, a couple of weeks ago, that had the list.
As I understand it, the, the roof costs right at one hundred thousand?
Yep.
One ten?
That's when we had gone through it, that's what I had heard, apologies.
Once again, Ted Murray, Theodore Murray, sixteen eighty-one, when we had gone through the building and he had talked about the TPO that was adhered to the top, he had put those costs right around one-ten to one-twenty-five, is what I had heard.
Okay.
So I don't know, he was, he was trying to talk to him again, because it had been leaking, so he had him come back, and I told him, you know, if it caused damage and things, they were responsible for that as an entity, because you have a one-year warranty by anything in the state of Florida. So maybe he got them down, beat them down on the price, and it's not that way, you know what I'm saying?
So the, the cost of the mold remediation and all of that, do we know what that is?
I believe the mold remediation, I believe, was in that list of the one hundred and seventeen thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think everything that they are, were gonna cover was in there, I don't think we're getting anything else.
Okay.
Well, then originally they offered somewhere around a hundred thousand, and that's why we went back to them to see if they would come back, to see if there was damage before or after the hurricane.
I don't know what the original offer was.
I don't see any difference in here whatsoever, then.
I don't know what the.
That was my understanding as well, when I had the meeting, that that was right at a hundred thousand dollars, because that's where he said his budget was, and he didn't have any money to do any mold remediation.
But that would've been a hundred thousand minus the fees.
A hundred thousand dollars, he had said a hundred thousand dollars is what he had for the roof.
Got it.
That was my understanding, when we took the tour through the building.
Got it.
And we had looked, and I had noticed some different areas that were, were kind of sketchy.
And when you say he, you're referring to the city manager?
The old city manager, yeah, I can't remember, Flowers.
David Flowers.
David Flowers, so when we had gone through that, and he had explained to me what monies they had coming in, that was part of it, because you had your deductible taken out of there, which is two percent of the total cost of the building, up to a certain amount, and then you had all the other aspects taken out of that.
Okay.
So my recommendation to you, though, is if they did pay you for mold remediation, and they did pay you for everything, you didn't have a certified mold remediator on premises, so just take the money, because you weren't really entitled to that, because they don't pay individuals that money unless it's a certified contractor that's submitting that bill.
Got it.
Okay.
So, at our joint meeting with the advisory board, will you have all those figures there? Of exactly what we've spent and what we got from the insurance company? Thank you.
It is a beautiful building.
Thank you, anything else on the insurance letter?
No.
Nope.
Seeing none, moving on to item number fifteen, council member discussion, we have city water meters, Spurlock?
Well, Ronnie's not here, it's kind of hard to talk about that, but.
Okay.
I just, I'm just looking at this, you don't have this in front of you, so I guess we just weigh it or whatever.
Yeah, they have everything that you have.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm looking at, at the, the meters that put in, and I'm looking at that Empire meter of thirty-four hundred and fifteen dollars, and I go down to the bottom, and I, I look at his loss calculation, that's, that's just about like the generator at City Hall, where the engineer said we needed something way up here, but we could do that down here. But here's what I want to show you, if you take one point seven gallons per minute, I'm sorry, yeah, per minute, times fourteen hundred and fourteen minutes a day, equals twenty-four forty-eight gallons per day, times thirty-day average, equals a loss of seventy-three thousand four hundred gallons of treated water a day. Well, that looks bad, but that's gotta be the wrongest calculation I've ever seen in my life, because that meter's not gonna run at one point seven gallons.
There you go.
All the way across the day, so we lost the money and the labor to change that meter out.
I agree with you.
That is just spending money that shouldn't be spent.
Did we already order these?
What, what was the, what was the, the point of this, what were you trying to accomplish?
Okay, it was, it was changed out, when I talked to him, it was changed out, because the meter that was on there, I think it, I don't know, I, I'm gonna be wrong in saying this, but I think it was an Avani meter, and it wouldn't pick up until like point oh-oh-four gallons per minute, but this, I'm sorry, this one would pick up at one point seven, and the Empire would pick up at point oh-four. Well, are we just going out there and changing meters because of that? We're not gonna make, we're not gonna make any money doing that.
I wonder if we could get a response from Empire, or from the person who manufactured it, or?
Well, I, I, I mean, if that meter, if that, if that water was going through that meter all day long at one point seven gallons per minute, yes, we'd lose money, but you know Walmart's not using one gallon a minute? You know, they're using a lot of water, so we don't need to be running out there changing industrial meters, I mean, we're.
I agree with you, because when I looked at this and I read it, and I'm like, wait a minute, so.
So perhaps we could get a response from Ronnie?
Yeah, well, I mean, we need to talk, we need to talk to Ronnie, because that's.
That's a major difference there.
We'll bring it back to the next meeting and make sure he's here.
I'll just, I'll just take it off and bring it back.
And then in the future, could we, we do, are there any other meters that is planned to be changed out?
Well, we changed one out, a classic Kledium's the same way already, I mean.
I'm sure we have a great many that are planned to be changed.
There's a lot of meters planned.
Can we stop that for right now, or we already purchased?
I think we should just talk to Ronnie and see, make sure that we're not doing something foolish, I mean.
Here's what my biggest concern is, okay, we were buying those meters from Avani, I hate to say this, until Rick Reed came on board. And now he's on board, and he's a former salesman with Empire Pipe, and we're buying all our, I don't, let me back up, we're buying most of our stuff from Empire Pipe and Val, we never bought from them people before. We were buying from HD and, and from Ferguson and people like that.
Are we getting a better deal?
I'm sorry?
Are we getting a better deal?
Uh, I, I don't know, that's what I'm asking you, are, I don't know if we're getting a better deal, better quality pipe, but it seems to me like they can't sell everything better.
There's one, there's a good way to find out.
That's right, that's right, so that's just got my curiosity up, and I want, I want to look into that.
All right, well, make Ronnie aware of the concerns, and hopefully he can provide some answers at our next meeting, or before.
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll try to get him before, because I'm gonna try to have a meeting with them on Wednesday.
Okay, very good. Very good, anything else on item number fifteen, Sarah?
Uh, was there garbage on there, too?
Yeah, that's next.
That's next, okay. Nothing else on item fifteen, we're on item number sixteen, we have the dumpsters in the Soto area.
Yeah.
Sarah, it's you again.
I've grumbled about those ever since, and he, he sent me a letter, and we're not, we're not on the same page with that, because I'm not wanting him to put a garbage truck on a road that's got an inch and a quarter of asphalt, things of that nature. I'm just wanting the residents of that apartment complex to pay for garbage. I mean, now, now those dumpsters are on the side. I mean, now, now those dumpsters are on the sides of the road up there, and the garbage is going everywhere except in the dumpsters.
Are you talking about Golden Age Village or Villas?
Talking about DeSoto and the road beside DeSoto. I'm talking about both of them.
DeSoto and Summit?
Right, and I've
That's not able to
Talked to Sabitri today, and she didn't know the size of the dumpster, and she called, do you have them?
Yes.
Danielle has done some research on this for the meeting too, so
We have a four-yard dumpster sitting on DeSoto, Summit, and Glenwood.
What are they paying for those?
Uh, each unit pays the residential garbage fee, all the residents and, all the units in that complex are enough to cover the cost of the rental and dumping of those dumpsters, which we dump five times a week.
How many times we dump it a week?
Five.
Five times a week? Will they get garbage five times a week?
And they pay how much?
Each unit pays the residential rate of fifteen dollars a month.
And that's covering the cost of that?
We pay fifteen dollars a month and we get it twice a month? I mean, we
Well, I mean
Would you, it's, yeah, it's, the cost that it would be equivalent per month for every unit in that, those villas
Uh-huh.
is enough to cover the cost for that four-yard dumpster at five pickups a week.
Right.
Okay, but if you go, if you go right across the street to the next unit, every one of those people have garbage cans. We are losing money on this. We are losing money, and we are losing the beautification of the city. I want those dumpsters picked up and a can put at every house.
We did prior to those dumpsters being there, we did have garbage cans and recycling cans at every one of those units, and it became a very cluster mess by their parking lot where they were lined during garbage days. So I think that's when it was decided to put the dumpsters to eliminate the amount of cans that were lining the street in that area.
It ain't working, it ain't working. I want those dumpsters
I know, I had a lot of apartment complexes, we have dumpsters.
Right.
And the reason being
Same, same concept. They pay garbage, but they have a dumpster.
Now, these units that you're talking about, are these the ones that kinda face that empty lot that's where McDonald's is and all that?
No.
No.
I'm talking about this, on that side of the mall over, straight across from the Nazarene Church.
North Florida.
Got it.
You go down DeSoto and the next street over.
It's kinda like a trailer park sort of?
Yeah.
No.
It's a mess and a half. I mean, it's just a mess and
They're behind Avon Park Village. Those are the trailers, and then you have the actual apartment.
Oh, I know, okay, got it, okay. All right, I'm tracking with you now. Okay, so why, why is it, why is that different than an apartment complex?
Listen, all I'm saying is, the difference is the mess, the mess, and we're picking it up five times a week.
Yeah, but as a business, I mean, if I own an apartment complex and I wanted to have it picked up five days a week, I could do that. I could pay for that. Just like, just like a business owner can have their dumpster picked up as much as they want.
We're picking that up five times a week. What does it cost?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's, the amount of units that are there was enough at the time when we did the calculation when we put the dumpsters, it was more than enough to cover the rental of that dumpster.
May I ask you where you got the info, that we were doing it five times a week?
Um, I used to track the schedule for the dumpsters, all dumpsters in the city.
Well, can you double-check on that and send it to all the council members?
Mm-hmm.
And run that calculation again and show us?
Yes.
I have a question for you too, Danielle. I believe that four cubic yards is the smallest size that we have for businesses.
I think I have a two.
No, we have a two yard, it's the smallest.
Well, why couldn't we go to a six or eight and make it larger and just pick it up less?
It all depends on how much the cost is. The larger the dumpster, the cost is gonna go up, and if it's gonna cost, if we're gonna lose money on the garbage, we wouldn't increase the dumpster itself.
It's gonna, it will cost more, but if we pick it up less, it may make it easier.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the fee schedule on it.
I'm just saying it's an option to look at.
Yeah.
If we're picking it up five times a week, they're paying us five hundred and two dollars and forty cents for every dumpster. I just don't believe that. I do not believe that they're paying that kinda money.
Well, we're gonna find out for sure very soon.
Yes.
This is easily solvable. Anything else on the dumpsters? All right. Item number seventeen, we have Duke lighting upgrade. Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Okay. For last meeting, I told you I would look into contacting Duke Energy to talk about the changing of the city lights throughout the entire city of Avon Park. I believe all the lights on Main Street have been changed out now to LED lights. And the original estimate was going to be approximately six hundred in the city. The next estimate is six hundred and ninety-five, but that is strictly an estimate because I know that the original estimate on Main Street was sixty, and when they actually went out there and counted, it was only forty-nine. So I believe what they do is they give you a high-end figure of how many they're gonna need and how much it's gonna cost. I also talked to them about some of the cost changes, and they have to make a decision when you're changing regular watt light bulbs to LEDs, that they're a much minimal amount, you know, a hundred-watt bulb could be actually thirteen watts for a residential. So they have to estimate, do they wanna go to a thirteen watt or a fifteen watt or whatever it is? And so the engineer actually told me they went a little bit above what would be equal to existing lights, would actually make the city even brighter than what the LEDs would do for like, compared to Main Street. But they could go down one wattage below, which would be closer to it, and that could save us a few hundred dollars a month, but I haven't got those exact figures. But I think the best thing to do is if we would start this forward, then that would get them out there to actually give an exact account and then the exact expense of what it would cost to change them out. And then we could then look it over at that time, and then we could vote to approve them with a start date. So all this does is it gets, if we make a motion to approve it tonight, the city manager can sign off on the letter, send it to the engineer. He'll have somebody come out and do the counting and give us an exact timeframe and cost and how many light fixtures, and we can decide at that time. But I think the fact that we have an opportunity to improve the city lighting in Avon Park to, in my opinion, a much, much brighter, safer light fixtures, which I think not only would the quality of the city look better, but also would make it a lot more safer. I think that's a proven fact, and I think most people in the city would agree to that. So with that being said, I make a motion that we go
Jim, may I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm not understanding. So you're asking about the city changing out all the lights in the city of Avon Park to LED? You said at the last meeting, and I might be mistaken, that the ones on Main Street was already done. Is that not correct?
At the last meeting, I said they were ninety-five percent done. I believe they're all done now. They were, it was supposed to be done that last week.
So we didn't vote on that, did we?
Yes, we did.
We did?
Yes.
I know, and I said I might not remember.
Several months ago, the process was started back in early summer.
I remember you bringing it to us and telling us that you were going to do that, but I just don't remember it being brought up.
We had ongoing lighting issues on Main Street, particularly like with the Christmas parade and different events that we had there.
Okay.
And so at that time, I believe it was probably
It actually took like three to four months to get the paperwork started, get the job, and once the job started, which was the middle of October, they were done like in two weeks.
Right.
So now this, so you're recommending now that, tell me again, what is it that you're recommending?
That we change every city light, those that are on light poles, to new LED lights.
But what, what he's proposing that we approve tonight is to get the ball rolling to get a cost estimate of that
Okay.
and a schedule estimate of that.
But not the approval of the lights?
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, this gives the ball, so they go out there and they count exactly how many they need, how many there are, and exactly what the cost would be, and then we can make the final decision there. Either way, I think it's something we should do, but I think for the time being, I'd like to see us get started right away, get the process started. It'd be nice if we could be the first, the only city in Hollins County that had bright LED lights all throughout the city because you drive some of the areas in Avon Park, and even the city's streetlights there, it's very dark. I mean, so this will make a major, major difference. In my opinion, it'll improve the lighting probably at least fifty percent.
Okay. Well, I've gotten a lot of compliments on the new lights. You know, I drive Main Street a lot in the dark, and it definitely looks a whole lot better. You can see more areas of it. And I mean, there's a reason why a lot of the larger industrial complexes are going to LED over the incandescent and fluorescent because they're, not only are they more efficient, but you can actually see more, so
Okay.
One of the reasons I got started on this is because I knew for several years, it seemed that there were many streetlights that were out when it came down to our Christmas parade.
Yeah.
That's what I remember.
There was many areas that you would sit, and it would be dark, and if the vehicles didn't have the lights on, which most of them didn't, you had a hard time seeing. And so there, so I called an engineer and said, can you come out there and have somebody count them and check? And they supposedly fixed all from that year, but that was about four or five years ago. And that's when he gave me the option, if we change the LED, your LED lights will last probably a minimum of ten years. So for ten years, you won't have to worry about changing them, so you won't have to worry about somebody coming out every year
I got you, Jim.
Okay, thank you very much.
I remember that now.
Okay.
All right. Does anyone have a motion?
He was gonna make a motion.
I make a motion that we go ahead and go forward with the lighting upgrade estimate to, with Duke Energy, to have them come out and count and give us the exact amount of how many lights and costs for future approval, and have the city, Interim City Manager sign that letter and send it off to the engineer with Duke.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And lastly, we have the city manager's report.
Okay. I have several things, actually. Some of them, some of them we've already discussed. I do want to address an email that everyone had received from somebody that no one's ever heard of before.
When was this email given? I've been having
I know, you've been having problems with yours. It was probably mid-last week, and it was addressing hiring of city employees and the council being basically prudent on how things were being handled and stuff. It's been researched by a council member and by an employee, and the name that was used evidently is not anybody real. But, but in either case, relating to that email, I do want to ask council about replacement positions for existing positions that have been vacated. One being, and one that's really crucial right now, is we lost a meter reader last week, and we only have one, and they're already behind on billing because of the meter issues and the misreads. Of course, you know, there's hundreds of mis, that have to be manually read. The utility department is becoming overwhelmed with this, especially being shorthanded to. We did run an ad for a meter reader, and we have two hundred and some applications already, two fifty-nine? And we just started the ad like last Wednesday. But what I'm asking is if council would approve the hiring of a meter reader, someone who can read the meters and help change out meters and help them get caught up and get repairs and that type of thing done. It's just replacing an employee that we had that we no longer have. And we also have some positions with sanitation. I mean, there are some things that I understand do have to be done and kept up because we want to keep our services, we'd like our services to be even better than they are, but we have to at least keep them running. So that's my question is, can we replace existing positions?
I don't have a problem with that at all. We have to keep the city going. If the next city manager has an issue with any employees, obviously they can take care of those issues.
Right. And, and just so you know, under the circumstances right now, the HR department is sitting in on interviews, but is not doing any hiring. The department heads will be doing the hiring for their department, so
Why is that? Why is HR not being involved?
She will be doing the processing of it, but she said she doesn't normally do the hiring unless they ask her to. But she wants to turn the hiring part, she'll be there, and they will be able to make the determination themselves on the candidate that they choose to hire with her. She'll be there to advise.
Okay. I'll just ask you to give me a call maybe tomorrow about
Okay.
Okay. Does anyone oppose to that? Do we need a motion for that?
Please.
Okay. Yes, sir. You know the drill.
Tom Macklin, six zero nine East Main Street, Avon Park. I've been out of town for several months, but I've been watching y'all over the internet, and I appreciate the fact that meetings have been posted. For those of us that have been out of town, it's been beneficial. This position that is being discussed right now as being hired, is that a position that, and I believe Councilwoman Sutherland was the one that made a pretty good point about this in the past, previous discussions, is this a position that normally would be posted internally?
It was for ten days.
So it already has been?
Yes, and nobody applied.
That answers my question, because I wanted to make sure that a concern that had been expressed in the past, that we weren't going askew from that, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it was posted, and I forgot to tell you that, it was posted internal for ten days, and no one internally applied, so
Okay. Any other questions on it? Need a motion for it?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the hiring of a meter reader position?
And And any of the other critical positions for replacement, can I do that too?
I think, I think her question was whether she could replace anybody who leaves that's in existing position because you had a hiring freeze that you wanted to oppose.
Got it.
So she's basically saying there's an exception to that.
Just the, just the vacated
You gotta just rehire people that have left.
Got it.
That's right. That's what she wanted to do, right?
Right.
And that's what you said, isn't it?
I specifically said meter reader, but it needs to be amended.
Existing meter, it wasn't second, so
It needs, it needs to be amended to include all vacant positions.
It dies without a leg, second.
Okay.
Yeah.
That motion is done.
There you go.
Is there a new motion?
I make a motion to go ahead and give the city, Interim City Manager approval to hire any replacement, any existing replacement employees that we need to continue with city business.
Okay, do we have a second? Second.
Thank you.
Questions? I'm not hearing anything. Is there questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I understood, I misunderstood the first time.
We have a motion in a second. If there's no further questions, then we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
Yes. In the past, we've been talking a little bit about health insurance for council, and we have been in touch with, we've talked to city attorney, and I believe you've been in touch with Mr. Koji too, haven't you, Jerry? Yeah, and we have too, and we actually got some information back from him at the end of last week, and then some confirmation on some questions we had this morning. The insurance can be handled as a compensation, and if a council member does want the insurance, it would be pre-tax. But if they want the compensation, that will be taxed and paid out on a monthly basis with your salary. Now, the issue with that is, and Brian said, that's if it does not have a problem with the charter. Well, in the charter, the charter says that the council gets paid a certain amount, and the mayor gets twenty-five percent more, and not, not, no less than twenty-five percent more. Well, the situation we have is that, and that the, and that the salary itself was set, the compensation would be set by ordinance, which we found the ordinance and that was in there. And so what we would want to do, if that's the way that you want to handle, if you're okay with doing that, then we would like to ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance so that we can do that. And then at that point, we can go ahead and probably have the ordinance second reading and completed by the end of the year, and then we would just make the payments retro back to October one. make the payments retro back to October one. So that's up to you guys, how you want to handle that.
Jerry, do you see any conflicts with that?
No, I mean, I can put together the ordinance if that's what you want.
Okay.
I mean, um-
Is this what the council wants? Does anyone oppose to it, in favor of it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. So do we need a motion to ask Jerry to draft that?
I don't, I don't think we do, do we?
Oh, fine. I can put together. The city managers asked me to do stuff before.
Got it.
Okay, and then just to remind-
We have another question. Mr. Macklin?
Oh, sorry.
Once again, Tom Macklin, six zero nine East Main Street here in Avon Park. It may have changed, but as Jerry's doing his research, I know that it used to be, and it was during my tenure and also Ms. Gray's, that, I don't know if it was a part of the charter, I can look, but I think it was ordinance, that a sitting council could not vote itself an increase in compensation.
I didn't find anything like that. Tom?
Okay, I know it was. I would have to go back myself and see if there was a change.
That was my understanding as well.
Yeah.
But I couldn't find anything.
The way that it used to be was if there was an increase in salary, and I remember when it was an increase in salary, it was never a conversation about insurance as compensation, that the vote could be taken, but until each of the sitting members' terms expired, and either they ran for reelection and were successful, it could not be put in effect.
I understand. I think the issue at one time might have been under chapter 112 of Florida statutes regarding ethics, whether you vote for something that inures to your own benefit, but there's a specific exception now under chapter 112, which specifically accepts those types of votes, because otherwise it's just-
I just don't have yous, please.
Okay.
Anything else on that? Move on.
Okay. A reminder that due to setting up for early voting and regular voting, the end of this week, Friday and Saturday, is early voting at the, early voting is here and the chambers, right? Or just here?
Just here.
Just here, okay. And then voting next Tuesday, regular voting will be here and at the community center from seven to seven. This building will not be available for any meetings between ten thirty-one and eleven five November fifth, all the way through that for the voting, so that's why we're having difficulty setting meetings. Also, City Hall and Public Works will be closed Monday, November eleventh, for Veterans' Day, but there will be no change in the garbage pickup. And I don't know why Suzie and I thought that the next council meeting was going to be the twelfth, but if you say it's the thirteenth, it's the thirteenth. But Planning and Zoning will have their meeting. They're going to have it-
It's the twelfth.
Okay, they're going to have theirs on the twelfth, so they won't be an issue. Okay, and last year, you let Public Works trash collection employees off on Thanksgiving Day, and if you decide to do that again this year, trash pickup for Thursday would be moved to Wednesday, and Friday would be regular pickup. I think that we should let them spend Thanksgiving with their families, but we would need a motion from you for that.
Okay. Is anyone willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion to go ahead and prove to give people that pick up our garbage and trash to take Thanksgiving Day off, and change the schedule accordingly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
And just a couple more things.
Okay.
We've already went over the CRA advisory schedule and stuff. The generator was installed on Saturday, October nineteenth, by Long's AC, and it's working fine. It's been tested, everything's going well with it. Of course, we're not having to use it either, but installation of the gym floor at the Boys and Girls Club started today. It should be done by the end of the week. And I received a purchase order for the fence for the basketball goal today, and Robert Trevino is waiting for a quote from Promise Technologies for repairs at Classic Coladium, so he's working with them on that. And the playground equipment that was put in the budget for the three parks was also ordered today, and it's part of the inter-local agreement with RPAC. And just to bring you up to speed, a week ago last Friday, one of our employees was out at the water plant at Bell Street, and he was on the Kubota, and he backed into a guide wire and took down two telephone poles and three transformers. Nobody was hurt, thankfully, and Duke Energy has done an investigation, and they're going to hold the city responsible, so they're going to send us a bill, I would imagine. But just, you know, for information purposes, there were two guide wires there, and one had a yellow sleeve on it and one didn't. And that's a brand-new Kubota, and you can't see, even if you turn around, it's really hard to see out of the back of it, and then you've got all the trees behind it. So when he's turned around the best that he can to look, because there's no backup camera in there or anything, he's not going to see that guide wire if it doesn't have a yellow sleeve on it, because of all the trees and stuff that are there, it's just going to blend right in. So to his defense, we sent him for a drug screen immediately, everything was good. It was truly an accident, so.
You just turn that over to your insurance, because they should be-
Yeah, we're turning it over to insurance, but I just wanted to make sure you knew, and as soon as I know what the amount is, I will let council know.
Can I make a suggestion on that? I think it's always maybe a policy to have anybody that uses a vehicle in that situation, that what you should do is make, complete walk around the area you're going to be working, and that way you know exactly what is there or not, like a lot of times, a lot of utilities companies will do that, and that's why they'll put out the cones in the front and the back of the vehicles, to show that they have to walk around and pick those cones up to make sure nothing's underneath them, so that may be a policy to take a look at.
Yeah.
That when somebody works with that type of equipment, especially without a camera, that they actually physically be required to walk around the entire area before they start to work.
Yeah, that's a good idea, and I will bring that to their attention. The last thing is Public Works will be starting the Christmas decorations this Friday. We're going to have to purchase some more decorations, and we're also going to have to purchase some decorations for Anna Marie and her project, because a lot of the things that she had, when they didn't use her last year, her things are missing. So we are, you know, we are getting together in a line item to bring some money out to help her with that as well, so it should be very beautiful out there, and they're going to get it started.
Let me ask you a question. As far as the lighting on the south side, were the plug things installed? Because the reason why the lights were not put on the south side, because I was told that there was no electrical thing to plug them in.
I've been told that that's all installed out there, and in fact, I think that's where they're starting on Friday, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else on that?
That's all I have.
I have one other question. There was, Jerry, I think that you was, at the last meeting, I asked this to be put on the city manager's report, the property on Delaney Avenue, no, Hal McRae, that was being, oh, what is the address of that property?
The one that was going to be demoed?
Yes, that one. There was a question on it, and you were supposed to have been checking that. I'm sorry, I don't have the address to the property.
Did you all receive the memo from Saxon Gilmore on that, did you not?
Yes, and I don't remember the address either. I will, I will send that to you tomorrow, or if you want to come pick it up.
What is it saying?
Yeah, what was the point, yeah?
Go ahead and give me a call about that, when you, when you look that over, and let's talk about it.
Okay, I don't remember for sure-
Okay.
-what it says, but I'll share it with everybody tomorrow, and I'll get with Jerry on it.
It provides a procedure to resolve this.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we keep abreast of that, because I've been asked several times in the community about it.
And for eighteen East Pine, that's already being, being taken care of. However, when they, when the company that was going to demo it went inside, it was full of furnishings and just tons of stuff in there. So I approved another twenty-one hundred dollars for them to clean it out and haul it off, so just so you know.
That's the eighteen East Pine?
Eighteen East Pine, and now we have a SWAT team wanting to use it for training. So I pass them on to someone else.
Okay. One question I have, you talked about the fencing or the basketball court on Main Street, are they also looking into adding the existing lighting that was supposed to be done already?
I didn't hear about that.
Okay.
You're talking about the lighting that was on the poles that are standing, but not-
Yes, there haven't been, there's some have fixtures, some don't. There's no electrical wire hookup on them. There's no use having light bulbs in a parking lot if we don't have lights on them, and I think it'd be great to have that lit before the Christmas parade, so it'd be something-
Okay.
Robert may have some information on that.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And tomorrow at two thirty, I'm meeting Chad Pritchett out at the Durham Martin Ball Field. They've been painting the dugouts and doing some work inside, and he wants to show me, and he wants to show me what they, what they have left that they want to do, and he said that he was told that the city would kick in five to ten thousand dollars to help. I don't find that anywhere, but anyways, I'm going to meet him out there, and then if, you know, if it becomes a situation, I'll get with council.
Yeah, there was some funds in last year's budget that could have been used, but that ship has sailed, so.
It's got absorbed.
Basically, you have to find in this budget, is there any room for anything like that or not?
Okay, all right. And I'll bring that back to you two with whichever way it goes, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sure ultimately, the council will probably have to approve one way or another.
Yeah, yeah. I definitely would want you to approve that, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing, sorry, keep going on.
That concludes our regularly scheduled agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the city? Ann? Name and address, please.
Anna Marie Feeny, two thirty-four East Camper Street, Avon Park. I just want to let everyone know, we are still accepting applications for the trees on Main Street. The brick project is coming to its annual close on the thirty-first, so if you know anyone who wants to put a brick down on Main Street, please have them call me. And there is a public event on Veterans' Day right here in Avon Park. It's called You Served Us, Now We Serve You, where we're feeding the veterans for free at Union Church. So with all of that, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a very important election coming up. Everybody get out and vote. We have early voting this upcoming weekend. Election day will be on the fifth. Arnold, you had something? Name and address, please.
Arnold Davis, twelve fourteen South Carolina Avenue, Avon Park. I just got one request. The retention pond that we have down on Delaney, we have a problem keeping it clean, and I have the people that live, live in front of it and behind it always complaining to me, and they was wondering why we can't keep it cut regularly on a regular basis, because it's grown up, you walk by there a lot, don't you, Ms. Gray?
Yes.
And it looked bad. It really looked bad.
Does staff know which retention pond he's talking about?
Yes.
You do?
Okay.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Thank you, Arnold. Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing nothing, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned.